Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please be seated. Again, thank you for joining us. Now that you're seated, would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in this one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Leonard Akers, Lead Pastor for Liberty Heal Methodist Church, my friend, for the invocation.
Thanks. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the gift of being able to be present and citizens of this city and especially citizens of this city at this particular place and time. We're grateful for all the work that has taken place, that is taking place, and that will take place in the future. I pray, Lord, tonight over every person who has something to say, who wants to come to this microphone and speak. I pray especially for those who aren't used to speaking in front of others. Please give all of them peace and clarity so that the thoughts that they have might be clearly articulated here tonight. I pray, Lord, for our council, we give you great thanks for who they are, their willingness to sacrifice their time and attention to care for all the citizens of this community. Please give them discerning hearts and listening ears so that they might receive exactly what needs to be received tonight. I pray also, Lord, if it be possible, that they might be unified in thought and purpose as often as that is possible. And when they are not, I pray that you would grant each of them peace and grace to find a way through. We love you, Lord, and once again, we thank you for the gift of being able to be here in this place at this time. Pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Akers. I want to call to order our February 16th to 2023 council meeting. Again, with consideration to approve tonight's agenda, are there any additions, revisions?
Mr. Mayor, I need to request an executive session for state litigation.
Any additional?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. In your council packet, you have the draft council meeting minutes from February 2nd meeting. Are there any revisions, additions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening. This is for your information only and no discussion. And that is presentation of staff report for cases ANNX 2210-006-RZON 2211-002 and CUP 2211-007. Applicant seeks to annex, rezone, and gain conditional use permit approval for 14.36 acres for property located more or less at 620 Prominence Point Parkway. Applicant seeks to consult, construct 116-unit townhouse development. Mr. Green.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, these applications are on the agenda tonight as an informational item only. They will come before you on March 2nd as a public hearing item. At that time, the staff report will contain a lot more information as notes come in from various departments. Also, on the agenda, it's listed as 116-unit. I received a rendering or site plan yesterday from Mr. Huff that now shows it to be a 114-unit project. As I've stated, it'll be on the March 2nd agenda as a public hearing item.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Do you have any announcements this evening? No one signed up for a 10-minute public input. We have one item on the consent agenda this evening. Discussion of possible action on the street acceptance for city maintenance for Watermist Drive. We've discussed this. Do we have an approval on the consent agenda? A motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving into old business. Item A, Discussion of Possible Action on Resolution to Adopt the Annual Update to Capital Improvements Plan and Five-Year Short-Term Work Plan for the Canton's Impact Fee Program. Mr. Patton, we've discussed this many times.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. This item has been discussed several times. There was a public hearing held on the annual update for the capital improvements element five-year short-term work plan in November. This has gone through review at ARC and DCA. DCA has indicated that it meets the requirements of Georgia's impact fee law for adoption. Staff would recommend that city council approve the resolution to adopt and adopt the CIA in five-year short-term work program so that we can submit it back through ARC and DCA prior to February 28th to maintain qualified local government status. I'm here to answer any questions any of you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Again, we've discussed this many times. Are there any questions for Mr. Patton? Any discussion? Any motions?
I will gladly make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the annual update to capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan for Canton's impact fee program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Item B, Old Business Discussion and Possible Action on Cases ANNX 2211-04-RZON 2211-006-CUP Applicant seeks to annex 2.2 acres, rezone, and gain master plan and conditional use permit approval on 20.01 acres located at 187 and 295 Gale Avenue, 191, 211, and 214 Putnam Drive, parcel 088, tax map book number 15N13A, for the purpose of constructing a residential development, T2 Capital Management. Mr. Green.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Green speaks, I want to make a note that an early agenda that went out last week noted that it was case ANNX 2211-04. It was amended to correct that to ANX 2211-004, which is on website, has been advertised and is on the screen tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, as you stated, this is a combination of an annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit, and master plan applications. This item is on the agenda tonight as an action item. Previously, the applicant has requested a deferral until this evening, and during that time, they have met with staff, they have adjusted their plan somewhat. The original application was for 300 rental units. That has now been reduced to 289, a reduction of 11 units. The original apartment building showed it as being two separate buildings. They have now combined that into a single building, and they have lowered one of the floors or buildings, a part of it, to a three-story building, as was discussed during the public hearing. With it going down to 289 units, they're only required to have two points of ingress egress. They are showing the main point to be off of Hill Creek Drive. The one that would be at Gale Avenue and Putnam would be gated in emergency access only. And that are some of the improvements or changes that they have made. The staff recommends approval of these applications with several recommended conditions, and I'll be glad to read those if you like.
Please do. Yes, yes, sir.
All right. If this was to be approved, Putnam Drive shall be abandoned by the governing entity that controls each section. All interior roadways shall be private and built to city standards. The required 50-foot buffer adjacent to unincorporated properties shall be heavily landscaped. The landscape plan shall be prepared by a registered landscape architect. This plan should be approved by the mayor and city council prior to the submission of a land disturbance application. Number four, the area between the creek buffer and Marietta Highway shall be undisturbed. Number five, the applicant developer shall provide $500 per living unit to the City of Canton Housing Fund. These monies shall be donated in full prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. The applicant developer shall provide $475 per living unit to the Cherokee County Board of Education. These monies shall be provided to the Board of Education prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. The applicant developer shall provide proof from the Board of Education that these monies have been provided. Number seven, there shall be a main point of ingress egress on Hill Creek Drive. The secondary point of ingress egress from Gale Avenue, Putnam Drive, shall be gated and used only in emergency situations. The Georgia Native Plant Rescue Society shall be allowed access to the property to search for and remove any endangered plant species. Number nine, the project shall be developed in accordance to Park's Hough letter and attachments dated February 8th, 2023. Number 10, all structures shall be constructed with a minimum of 50% brick or stone as an exterior building material. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have that I can answer.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Green. So we've discussed this case. We've had the public hearings. There've been revisions and changes. I want to thank our staff for their work on this case. I want to thank the developer for their revisions to the project. I want to thank, of course, the citizens for their input throughout the process. There are 10 conditions, as Mr. Green read, to consider for council. So at this point, do you have any questions or discussion? Any questions for Mr. Green or discussion? Ms. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I move to deny the annexation of 2211-004, the 2.2 acres at Gale Avenue and Putnam Drive.
Okay.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I also like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move, or I'd move to deny the rezoning request, 2211-006, continue conditional use permit, 2211-005, and master plan, 2211-008.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving into new business. Item A, Discussion and Action on the 2023-2024 Insurance Benefits Renewal. Mr. Ingram.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council. It is that time of the year again that we have to consider the city's insurance renewal, which renews April 1st. This is for the...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can I wait just a moment?
Yes.
If you don't mind repeating what you... If you don't mind repeating, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
We presume now.
April 1st, the city's insurance for its health insurance and benefit renews. If working backward, we need to have open enrollment for our team members in March. So therefore, that's the reason we're coming to you today with a proposal, and we're going to ask, if possible, that we can get action on this item tonight. Ms. Waters was unfortunately not able to attend tonight, so I took her place. What you have in front of you is a recommendation to move our insurance back to Anthem Blue Cross, which is the carrier that we have had for a number of years up until this recent year where we switched to Aetna. And we are proposing to provide two options to our team members, to our employees. We've held some recent huddles, and that was a common comment that we heard from our team members. They would like to have options. An option for individuals with a traditional plan that has your typical co-pays for doctor office visits, co-pays for pharmacies, and then have another option that may have a higher deductible, like a high deductible health plan. So in discussion with our carrier, we're proposing council approve to offer these two plans. They are very similar in cost. Overall, our team members will only see literally just a dollar or two per pay period increase in their premiums. And in doing so, we would also offer a $500 HSA upfront contribution by the city into an HSA account if the participant enrolls in the high deductible health plan. After that time, we will match the employee's contribution up to $20 for the following year. That would give the employee up to a little over $1,000, $1,020 from the city into an HSA plan. They can use that for all of their qualified medical expenses, which include any type of meeting their deductible first in the year or purchasing prescriptions of that nature. Right now, we do not know the split, how many employees will take the high deductible health plan or the traditional plan. So I can't calculate an exact cost difference, but I will tell you this. Again, the employee's paycheck will only be affected literally just by a couple of dollars. Two, overall, the cost to the city, in my calculations, it could be as little as zero, up to no more than about $60,000 to $70,000. And that is no more than about a 4%, 5% overall cost increase. It is budgeted, it's within budget, and so we'd ask for tonight for some consideration to approve those two plans.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. So just for confirmation, even with the $500 contributions and the subsequent $20 match to the HSA accounts, that would be included. Those are calculated into the budgeted amount we have for the increase in insurance. Okay. And as always, I want to thank the team for their hard work on this. I know the negotiation, negotiating insurance premiums is not easy and not fun, so thanks to everyone. So any questions for Mr. Ingram?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ingram, for the benefit of residents and employees, what, if I understood you correctly, the $500 contribution will be made to the HSA program for the high deductible? Is that the high deductible only?
That's only the high deductible health plan, yes, sir.
And what's the rationale behind that?
The IRS requires you to have a high deductible health plan if you contribute to an HSA. If you have a traditional plan, you are not permitted by the IRS to have an HSA, a health savings account.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Ingram?
I've done something to my mind. Not sure what. But anyway. Oh, thank you. Will there, will the new old insurance have dental hearing and vision?
Yes, it will all be with Anthem. Anthem provided us an additional discount if we moved all of those insurance to Blue Cross Anthem instead of currently is with Aetna.
Okay. And didn't the Blue Cross have dusted up with Northside Hospital? Did they get that settled?
They did get that settled, yes, ma'am.
And will people who are on Aetna now be able to take, it's Aetna that we're on now, carry over their doctors to the new insurance?
We did, when we did move to Aetna, we did a report to see how many individuals would lose, you know, they wouldn't have their doctor with Aetna. The impact was very minimal. So I would like to say with good confidence that, yes, most, the vast, vast majority of their doctors would also be in network with Anthem. I would suspect that there would be very few. I don't think, generally, in speaking with the team members, with our employees, I don't think there's going to be a lot of heartbreak going back to Anthem.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2023-2024 insurance benefits renewal plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Item B, New Business Discussion and Possible Action of Resolution of Joint Application with Cherokee County for Raze Grant. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. Ms. Watson is not here tonight, so I'm going to present this on her behalf. There is a new federal program that came up through the bipartisan infrastructure law that relates to transportation projects. One of these is called Raze, Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant. In this particular situation, Cherokee County, one of the things that they look for in the grant is cooperation among multiple jurisdictions. So when the grant was announced, Cherokee County reached out to the cities and asked if the cities would join together with the county to apply for funding that could be used for transportation infrastructure and pedestrian improvements within the county that may overlap city and unincorporated boundaries. The way the program is written, the minimum grant application is $5 million. We have put forward, and of that $5 million, a local match of 20% is required. What we are putting forward is a request for funding for a list of 17 projects in Cherokee County. Our request for funding is a total of $2.9 million as it relates to design. Of that $2.9 million, the City of Canton would be responsible for $333,950 on the projects that are within the city. Of the 17 projects that are being recommended, 10 of the projects are actually within the City of Canton. As you'll recall, when we were doing service delivery negotiations with the county, we asked the county to do a study of Old Highway 5 as a countywide transportation project. They did that. The county also did a transportation master plan. Part of the reason why 10 of the projects are in the City of Canton is we just have our own transportation master plan that we've just approved. And because we had so much data related to those projects, we were able to seek some additional funds from the program. The 10 projects that are listed in here include Prominence Point Parkway and Kroger Drive at the Marietta Highway location. What is being requested at that location would be to add a second northbound turn lane. So you would have two lanes that turn left from the prominence from Marietta Highway coming from the interstate. Then there is a project at Ridge Road, which adds some additional turning lane at that particular intersection. There's a project at Riverstone Boulevard. Riverstone Boulevard is the road that is in between the McDonald's and the Chick-fil-A adjacent to Riverstone Parkway. The request for that project, there's currently three lanes of travel as you're going from the Bluffs down to Riverstone. One of those lanes is restricted as a right turn lane. This project would allow all three of those lanes to make left-hand turns because they would be three left, three through lanes on Riverstone. I-575 at exit 20 southbound, this would create two southbound lanes onto the interstate from Riverstone. I-575 exit 20 northbound ramp, this would create a free flow right from the ramp so there wouldn't be stopping at traffic signals. You'd be able to make the right turn onto Riverstone, having to stop for traffic that comes through. So there's some lane improvements there. Butterworth Road and Univetta Road, this would be a design study for a roundabout at that intersection to work with the county. Bell's Ferry, this is Bell's Ferry and Marietta Highway. This would create a guarded green turn for those that are turning from Bell's Ferry to the left to get onto Marietta Highway. Right now, there's, it's kind of a, I guess the term I'll use is wonky. It's a wonky intersection. The last two projects on here are pedestrian projects. One is from Tiffany Lane to Milton Drive, so this will be the area on between the Cracker Barrel and the Chick-fil-A, and it adds sidewalk on that side of the road. And then the last one is five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the road of Marietta Highway from Prominence Point Parkway all the way to Knox Bridge Highway. We anticipate that to be the most expensive project on the list just because of the length of it. The total cost of those projects in the city for design are $1.8 million. Of that $1.8 million, $1.4 would be coming from the federal grant, $333,000 coming from the city, and the county has $34,000 in that particular project. There's additional projects in Holly Springs, Woodstock, and Ball Ground, but we're not really approving their section of the project list. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We would like to seek action on this resolution tonight so that we can get it turned in with our application as soon as possible and hopefully get to the top of the stack on these.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. And again, just to confirm, this would be the, well, over $330,000 would be the maximum if we received grants for all these 10 projects in the city. So for the design services, which would be a great deal in my book. So likelihood that we would receive all of them, I would imagine is probably not great, but it'd be great if we did. But, and then also, just to point out that this is based on, you know, projects that were both in the city's master transportation plan and the county, so these projects have been identified. I know the Marietta Highway and Prominence Point, you know, those issues there have been identified for a while, and I know that particular traffic issue was pointed out in the project we voted on tonight, and that's, you know, the exact reason that council adopted our roadmap, which included in the master transportation plan and included transportation infrastructure tenant, so we could be proactive about these things. So even as we're talking about transportation issues on some of these projects, you know, the goal was to be proactive about these issues and address them. So when funds do become available, we can use them to apply to some of these transportation projects. So we are trying to be proactive. We have years of development that occurred from 2000 and on that we're trying to catch up and overcome, but projects like this and opportunities are a great opportunity to try to catch up and resolve some of these issues. So it's great to hear about adding turning lanes there at Prominence Point, at the Kroger and Publix, and also the possibility of adding sidewalks all the way down Marietta Highway. So anyway, and then creating more turn lanes there so everyone can get into Chick-fil-A there on Riverstone Parkway, because we know how important that is to everyone. So, but anyway, any discussions, questions about this? Ms. Peppers?
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, just for a point of comparison, our contribution, our match is $300,000. If we were going to do these projects in Canton, how much would we be spending without grant money?
It'd take $1.8 million just to do the design work.
$1.8 million?
Yes, ma'am.
To do the design work for all 10 projects?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're getting a deal if we get the grant, yeah.
And I would mention, too, that this doesn't mean we're not working on other projects. There are some projects that were outlined in our master plan that we want to move on faster just because of the scope of the project and the location and existing traffic situations. These are particular projects that probably would have shown up later in our master plan process, but if we can get the federal funds to kickstart those, then that's a benefit to the city and the county as well. but if we can get the federal funds to kickstart those, then, then that's a benefit to the city and the county as well.
Thank you.
One comment, I guess, just, uh, call me Captain Obvious if you'd like, but, um, this project would be designed to fund only the design services, correct?
That's correct.
So the, the, I don't want people to get too excited that if we are awarded this, this grant, that suddenly they're going to see, you know, the three turn lanes and all the other projects come to life, because it's going to take some time to get those funded and, uh, and get them, you know, get them rolling. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear, so people are clear about that.
Well, and, and I would mention too, that, um, so far, the city has had good luck when we are, are proactive in getting designs done and getting those projects funded through the Atlanta Regional Commission and overall regional, uh, traffic improvement program. Good example of that are the projects that we have going on State Route one-forty North. Um, we move forward with design on those. We paid for designs on those, uh, in those areas that we control as a city. And every time we've applied for ARC funding, we've received, uh, approval for some part of that project. When we have reached out to ARC in the past to fund things and the design has not been completed, it's been a much more difficult road to get, um, paid for. So I think, I think even having the design done will make us eligible for additional state funding on some of these projects as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the resolution of support, um, for the joint application with Cherokee County for the Raze Grant.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few, uh, items tonight to go over. Uh, first, uh, I did want to let you know that our operations report from January, you have a copy of it. It's also on our website. Encourage our residents to take a look at that. It basically overviews everything the city's been working on, uh, and completed during the month of January. We have two, uh, public hearing applications that came in in February. One of them is variance-related, uh, and the other one is, is an annexation and rezoning. The variance-related case, uh, is to reduce a required fifty-foot buffer to twenty-five foot along Waleska Road. Uh, that will be going, uh, to a public hearing on March thirteenth, uh, for the, uh, Board of Appeals. And then the, uh, second case is annexation twenty-three-oh-two double-oh-four and rezoning twenty-three-oh-two double-oh-one. Uh, the applicant seeks to annex and rezone three-point-five-five acres, uh, off of Bluffs Parkway. So this is, this is one of those small notches that, uh, is unincorporated at this time. And their goal is to construct a volleyball facility, uh, indoor volleyball facility. We received that application on February first. Uh, it will show up on the agenda as an informational item, uh, information only for the public on March second. It'll be placed on the agenda for March sixteenth for the staff report, uh, and it will have a public hearing on April sixth for the council. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to make note of. Uh, we wanted to give you an update. The question was asked about some project, development projects in the city and where they are at this time. Uh, so I'll quickly go over those. Avanta, that is the, um, the, uh, residential portion of the Riverstone Pod that is south of MLK. Uh, it is currently in the land disturbance permit review process. Uh, the Crystal Lagoon, nothing has been submitted yet on that project. Dominion, which is the, uh, age, uh, age-restricted, uh, multi-family project that was approved on Bluffs Parkway, uh, is currently working with Department of Community Affairs on some funding applications. Uh, the, the residential project that includes multifamily and townhomes on Hospital Road is currently in the land disturbance review process. Uh, the multifamily at Jackie Moore Lane is under review for their land disturbance permit. Across the street from that, the townhomes, remember there was multifamily? They got converted to townhomes, uh, on Marietta Road. Nothing has been submitted to staff yet on that. Uh, the Prominence Point, uh, multifamily project is, uh, nearing completion with its construction. Uh, Great Sky Pod sixteen, uh, has not submitted anything yet for their permits. And then the, uh, apartment project at Mill on Etowah is currently working on its permit. At this time, it's in review. Uh, so that's an update on those cases. Are there any questions about those? Any information you seek? Uh, the last thing I wanted to note, and I've got a, I think I've got a picture here. Uh, we started this year with a team member of the month, uh, and so this is a, this is a nomination process from our staff. Mr. Todd Gregory, uh, who is in our Building and Safety Services, uh, department, was recognized as our team member of the month for the month of January. Uh, his nomination, uh, basically said he's a, he's a, a, a mean old man that makes sure that, uh, the employees that he works with that are going to get certifications, take their test, and they study for their tests. He's a little bit of a, of a school marm in that department. Uh, but the thing about Todd is, he wants to see all of his coworkers succeed. And he understands that our department is stronger when everyone in that department is working on additional licenses for inspections, and they can do a more robust job for the city. Uh, so he was a bit surprised. Uh, we did present him with an award. We, we took his picture. We, uh, we embarrassed him a little bit, uh, and then, and then let the rest of our team know how important he is to us. And we'll be bringing these to you at the second meeting of every month, just to highlight some of our team members, uh, from the city of Canton. So I appreciate, uh, our Human Resources Department for handling this and, and our, our review committee, which is the chief and Mr. Hooper and Mr. Ingram for reviewing those nominations as they come in so that we can, uh, recognize some good team members. I don't have anything else unless you have anything else you'd like to ask?
We'd like to congratulate Mr. Gregory on his award and his roasting by our staff, but, uh, but that's great. So we look forward to future, uh, uh, staff members are recognized for their great service. So anything else for Mr. Peppers?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't have any council introduce items at the point of, oh, we had, do we have one?
I don't, I have an announcement, because when you asked for any announcements, you just breezed right over. Didn't even look this way.
Well, okay.
I wanted to let everyone know that this Friday, we'll be celebrating our thirtieth Arbor Day. And, uh, I believe it's from ten to four, uh, the gazebo in Cannon Park. And we're giving, uh, we have seedlings, um, and I don't know how much they are. We're giving them away, aren't we? We're giving away seedlings, and, uh, we have some other, um, things of interest there also. So please come.
Great. Awesome.
It's this Friday.
This Friday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So, okay.
Tomorrow. Gosh.
This Friday, as in tomorrow?
Time passes.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, I just have a couple of items. Um, I want to say I did get a, uh, message from the mayor of City of Dunwoody last week and who, uh, we're still trying to, we haven't had played phone tag for, for several days now, but, uh, uh, City of Dunwoody would actually like to either hold their retreat or start their city council retreat in the city of Canton. So, um, I think it's quite a honor to, uh, credit to this, this, this council that, uh, other cities consider coming to the city of Canton to hold their council retreats. So I was quite, uh, quite pleased to hear that. So just wanted to share that with you guys, and once we have, uh, details and dates, I'll share that with the city manager and let our staff, uh, know about that, so. But, um, did, um, do have a couple of board and commission appointments, uh, to make to, tonight in our ongoing, uh, efforts to kind of field on, uh, those, um, appointments. And so, uh, tonight, we have a couple of, of vacancies, uh, on the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, we had two, uh, two members that, uh, whose terms expired at the end of, uh, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, Ms. Nell McGruder and Mr. Bill Teasley, we want to thank them for their great service, uh, to the, the Preservation Commission. They've done a great job, uh, and that commission continues to do great work. Um, and for, uh, Ms. McGruder's position, um, I'm pleased to, uh, nominate for the appointment Mr. Lee Oliver, who is a member of, uh, a resident of East Main Street, has a passion for preservation. Um, and, uh, he, I'm not sure if he's here tonight. Is he here tonight? I know he's going to try to make it, but a young man who's, uh, who moved into the city, uh, last week, so we're happy to have him on board. So I'd like to nominate him and ask for a second and a vote for the Historic Preservation Commission for Mr. Lee Oliver.
Second.
So the nomination and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Uh, for the variance Board of Appeals, we have some openings on that, and I would like to, uh, reappoint Mr. Luke Smith, uh, to the variance Board of Appeals. Um, and, um, spoken to him, and he's eager to, to be reappointed. I appointed him, um, back in twenty-twenty. Um, variance board did not meet a lot that year due to the pandemic, uh, but, um, he's served well, and so I'd like to appoint him for a new term, so Mr. Luke Smith. Uh, I'll ask for a second to his, uh, nomination.
Second.
And ask all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the appointment. And then also, uh, Ms. McGrue would like to reappoint Karen Randall to the variance Board of Appeals, uh, who served, I think, the same, same term, uh, this last term, and is eager to, to serve again. Uh, so I'd like to appoint her and ask for a second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for that appointment. Any other appointments to boards? Uh, I think we have a, um, uh, another possible candidate for the, uh, other open position on the var, on the, um, Historic Preservation Commission that we'll probably make at the next meeting. We're just waiting for confirmation, uh, for that candidate, so. Um, and again, you have the list of the ongoing, uh, openings on those boards, so we'll update the appointments on those, and we will keep moving forward with those. And always, we want to thank our citizens who are willing to step forward and service the city, uh, serve the city, um, uh, in those volunteer positions, so. Uh, and that's all I have this evening. Uh, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We are adjourned. Thank you.